It's 4:34 and I'm going to call this meeting to order. Mayor Salinas is a little under the weather, he's got a touch of the flu, so I'll be conducting the meeting today. First item of Christmas is the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guiding hand to lead us through this meeting, Lord. May your love and grace continue to guide us in everything that we do today and in the future. As we go through the holidays, fill us with your light and love. Fill us with joy and spirit of gratitude and generosity that we may truly be a blessing to others, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Okay. Okay.
Yes, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem and council, good afternoon. I'd like to see if Chief Dominguez and Officer Robert Rodriguez can help me with this presentation. In the past two years, we've been partnering up with Target, our store here in our Sheraland area. Target has been very instrumental in being able to give back to our community. Last year, they donated a total of $10,000. Those $10,000 went to 100 kids, and so those kids were able to go into the store, shop with a police officer, a firefighter, or an educator. They were able to shop for $100 for anything that they wanted, whether it's a toy, clothing, any item. So it was a great day for the kids that day. This year, they did the same. This year, they donated $15,000. They were able to assist 150 kids. And so through Target, we were able to bring police officers, firefighters together, councilors, schoolteachers, principals through our Mission School District and our Sheraland School District. And through the efforts of Target, we're able to bring a great smile to these families and their kids. And so we're very grateful to be able to have a wonderful relationship, a wonderful partnership with Target and the fact that they always come back and give back to the community. So we're really here to give thanks to Louis Rodriguez, who's the area manager of Target, and also Dania Rodriguez, who is the store manager. If they can please come up here and receive a little token of appreciation from the Mission City Council.
Go ahead. Yes? You want to do it up here?
I can hear you.
Wherever.
For some of that, I'm sure.
We had so many shows of our show event itself, so I thought it would kind of need to give you guys a little reminder. We got, we had that many people, we had about 150 kids and we had over 150 volunteers at the event, which is great to see. A bunch of city leaders and many of the law enforcement and firefighters out there together, helping out for one good cause out there. So it was great.
Louis, do you want to say a few words?
Just, you know, thank you, Chief Dominguez, Xavier Rodriguez, city manager, Mr. Garcia. Just, my gain of money is easy. It's getting the whole community coming together, giving our kids in this community a great Christmas. So just appreciate everybody making these events happen. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
(Applause)
Smile.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks again, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next item is a presentation by Encore Electric Delivery Service. Mr. Garcia?
Yes. First of all, we want to welcome representatives from Encore here. Encore is a new company that is here in the Rio Grande Valley, and we're blessed to have them here at Mission. There is a new transition between Sheraland Utilities and now Encore, and here to present as a representative who is accompanied by several of his coworkers, and we're happy to see you here, sir, and welcome to the city of Mission.
Thank you, city manager. I appreciate it and appreciate the opportunity to visit with all of you here on city council in Mission. We're excited to be here. The day started out kind of unusual with an airplane in Dallas. It got stuck on the runway for a couple hours.
Oh, no.
But we finally made it, and we're excited to be here in Mission, Texas, and appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and Mayor Pro Tem Garza earlier this afternoon, and very much appreciate city attorney Abel Flores and his accommodations to us. We do have several individuals with me today. We have Charles Elk, who's Vice President of Customer Operations, Richard Cazares, who is Vice President of Customer Operations, and Mr. Steve Ragland, who is Vice President of Rates and Regulatory Affairs in Dallas. And we wanted to come down. We're excited about the opportunity to work with the city and the new customers that we've acquired through the Sheraland transaction. And without saying much more, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Ragland and let him give you kind of a overlay of everything that we're up to, and appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
I want to put y'all's mind at ease. I'm not here to sell anything. I'm not asking for any money, and I don't need an ordinance pass, so we should be good. We're just here, exactly what Mark said. We are proud to be here. Encore Electric Delivery Company, we are headquartered, corporate headquarters are in Dallas, Texas, but we serve over 130, we serve 53,000 square miles in the state of Texas. We are the largest transmission and distribution utility in the state. We currently hire 3,700 employees, and we serve 3.4 million delivery points throughout the state. That's where they're metered. That covers about 10 million Texans. We had an opportunity recently to acquire the distribution facilities for, that currently belong to Sheraland, which part of that resides right here in Mission, Texas, and we are really pleased to be here. No sales pitch, nothing, but we get excited that we can help people out. Now, I learned a while ago, I was meeting just briefly with a couple of members, city manager Garza and Mayor Pro Tem Garza, and I learned real quick that y'all don't really want to hear any of these other stats, other than what we're going to do to your rates. So I'm going to tell you that right up front. If you look at the current rates that are utilized by Sheraland in this particular area, we always look at delivery, average residential customer uses 1,300 kilowatt-hours a month. More in the summer, sometimes less in the winter, sometimes just as many, but on average about 1,300 kilowatt-hours. So I've done a comparison here of what that delivery rate, and I'll remind you, we're not including the electric, the energy portion of that. You get that from your retail electric provider. But the delivery rate alone currently in, for 1,300 kilowatt-hours in this area is $57.26. Our rates will drop that to $51.54 on average. Again, it'll vary, and don't look for that to be your exact bill unless you use exactly 1,300 kilowatt-hours. A point that was made up in our, or was brought up in our meeting just a little while ago was talking about what would have happened in the future. Sheraland, who, good company, but Sheraland had gone down and asked for a rate increase. They were going to try to move more towards system-wide rates. Their rates in other areas of their service territory are much higher than what we're talking about here. Their rates in Brady, Stanton, Celeste were somewhere in the neighborhood of two to two-and-a-half times higher than what we charge for delivery rates. It wasn't that they were trying to make an inordinate amount of money. They just had a small system, few customers, spread over a very large area for those customers, and it was a very high delivery cost to get to that. As part of our most recent rate proceeding before the Public Utility Commission, we agreed to two things. We would settle our rate case that we had before the commission, and that we would take over responsibility or ownership of the distribution facilities that are currently or had been currently owned by Sheraland. One did not happen without the other. They were dependent on each other for those two things to happen. We were able to work a lot of hours, through a lot of negotiations. We made an exchange with Sheraland. We gave them or transferred to them certain transmission facilities that we had in the state, and they in turn, or in turn, we got their distribution facilities. And let me just tell you again, reiterate, we're very excited about this opportunity. I will tell you, this is my first trip down here to Mission, down to this far south Texas, and everybody I've met so far is just great, and we're excited about it. And what we wanted to do was to put some faces to the names that y'all are going to work with. We apologize that these are the faces we came with, but we did want you to know who we were, and we will, we do want to be able to work with you, to be responsive to you, and to meet your needs for reliability, for safety, and try to maintain as low rates as we possibly can for that delivery service. I have, if it's okay, and I've already passed out to y'all, but there are some pamphlets here that are statistics. These are 2016, '17, obviously is not out yet, but I will put some of these over. I used to work for municipalities. I'm going to hand these to city secretary instead of coming to you, if that's okay.
Sure. Thank you. Absolutely.
Let's lay out just some of the statistics that I talked about just now. But I know we've been able to work with, or Mark has, with Mr. Flores, and we'll make whoever you want to be a contact. I gave y'all some cards. I'll be happy to give the rest of your cards for me. If you have an issue, you have a question, I will tell you, I'm not the smartest person, but I know the ones that are, and I can put you in contact. There's a lot of it I'll know, but I'm not an expert on every particular instance you're going to face, but we have some competent people, and we want to do you a good job and we want a good reputation.
Thank you very much.
If y'all have any questions, if anybody else wants to speak, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Next item? We have a proclamation for Melden &amp; Hunt, 70th anniversary.
Yes, mayor, council, Mayor Pro Tem and council, good afternoon. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas in April of 1947, Mission, Texas native Charles L. Melden began a small engineering and surveying company. Ten years later, a civil engineer from Mississippi named Raymond C. Hunt joined Melden as a partner in the firm. These two talented engineers came together with a shared vision to form what is today one of the most well-known engineering firms in the Rio Grande Valley of South Texas. Whereas through hard work and a strong commitment to excellence, their firm, now known as Melden &amp; Hunt, Inc., would go on to become one of the longstanding and widely respected engineering, surveying, and consulting firms in the Rio Grande Valley. Whereas in 1971, a talented engineer named Larry L. Smith joined the partnership of Melden &amp; Hunt. During his 37 years at the firm, Smith served in several capacities, including project manager, principal engineer secretary of the board, and then became president in 1985. Whereas in July of 1996, Melden &amp; Hunt moved into the historic Golden Jersey Creamery Building, one of the oldest commercial ventures in Edinburgh. Whereas after 70 years, Fred L. Kurth, president, Vice President Alan F. Boo, Kelly Hellevella, Robert N. Tamesse, Mario A. Reyna, and the dedicated team of employees all remain committed to preserving the enduring legacy of Melden &amp; Hunt Incorporated. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Mission, do hereby congratulate Melden &amp; Hunt on their 70th anniversary, proclaimed on this the 18th day of December 2017.
Sir.
I just want to show our appreciation for the proclamation. We really appreciate that. We've been working here in Mission for a long time. I think I started in 1985 doing projects with Mission, and we've been going ever since, and we appreciate that and look forward to 70 more years.
70 more years. There you go.
I would like a picture if we could get one.
Yes, absolutely.
We need to approve that. I'm going to approve.
Yes, second. There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation is read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
We have to approve it now.
I guess we have to do that first.
Congratulations.
Thanks again. I really appreciate it.
All right. The next item is the presentation of 20, 25, 30, and 35-year service award recipients. This is always a nice time for the city to recognize the employees that have been with the city for so long and have been here and committed to the city, and we really appreciate your service. And Martine?
Yes, ma'am. Very well mentioned. Really, it's an honor to have great employees for the city of Mission. I can say that I'm very honored to work not only with great directors, but certainly with great supervisors and staff members that really bring a great service to our community. I'm going to ask Ms. Aida Lerma to come and help me in present, but we do have people from 20, 25, 30, and 35 years. And when you see that amount of years with a municipality, you see a lot of loyalty behind your departments and behind your employees. So we're very blessed to have employees that have dedicated their, basically their lives to serving the citizens of Mission. So I want to personally thank you on behalf of the mayor and the rest of the council for your service, and I know it's a small token of appreciation, but it couldn't have come at a better time during Christmas. So thank you, and certainly thank you and your families that really gives us the opportunity to spend time with you and for you to spend time with the community. So thank you and your families. Ms. Lerma? Do you all want to step down here so we can take pictures with the, with our employees? Thank you.
Can you come forward a little bit, right here? So when they get the, when they get the, right there. Representing the Streets Department, we have Jose E. De Leon celebrating 20 years of service.
Also celebrating 20 years of service with the fire prevention with Mission Fire Department is Ruben A. Gutierrez.
Also celebrating 20 years with fire, with fire suppression is Douglas B. Williams.
Golf Course is Rodrigo Anzaldua.
I'd like to recognize Reynaldo Casares with Mission Police Department with 25 years of service.
Yes, sir. Can we have family members that want to take a picture, y'all come along here and take a picture with your, your family.
With order.
Right here. Three, two, one.
Also celebrating 25 years of service with the Mission Police Department is Orlando Cedillo.
With the Sherland Municipal Golf Course celebrating 25 years is Leocadio Reyes.
Celebrating 25 years of service and retired after 25 years of service with the Mission Spear Memorial Library is Robert L. Rivera.
30, I'm sorry. 30, I'm sorry, is on the wrong list here. 30 years of service.
Thank you.
30 years.
Yes, 30 years of service.
We're going to have to get it corrected.
Yes.
Three, two, one.
With the Mission Police Department celebrating 25 years of service is Victor Solis Jr.
With the Parks and Recreation Department, Mr. Juan A. Tramille, 25 years of service.
And our last honorary of 25 years of service to the city of Mission, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Mr. Martine Garza Jr.
(Applause).
With the Sherry Municipal Golf Course celebrating 25 years is Leo Cadio Reyes. Celebrating 25 years of service and retired after 25 years of service with the Mission Spear Memorial Library is Robert L. Rivera. Thirty, I'm sorry. Thirty, I'm sorry, is on the wrong list here, 30 years of service. Yes, 30 years of service. With the Mission Police Department celebrating 25 years of service is Victor Solis Jr. With the Parks and Recreation Department, Mr. Juan E. Tramil, 25 years of service. And our last honoree of 25 years of service to the City of Mission, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Mr. Martín Gasa Jr. Celebrating 30 years of service to the City of Mission in the Finance Department with us today is Ana Casanova. Also celebrating 30 years of service is our Chief of Police, Roberto Dominguez. Celebrating 30 years of service to the City of Mission from the wastewater plant, Rodolfo Garcia Jr. And now, this isn't a milestone. After many, many years of service to the City of Mission, we're proud to recognize with the Mission Police Department, Jose E. Garcia. We know him as our Assistant Chief, Tony Garcia. That concludes the honorees. Let's have a big round of applause for all of our employees celebrating an anniversary today. We want to invite our honorees and their families. We put some tamalitos and some pan dulce for you, and we'd like to share that with you if you'll join us in the, in the community room here.
Thirty-five years.
He was five. He was five years old.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation of award received by City Secretary's Office.
Yes, Mayor Protem and Council, I'm pleased to announce that at the annual Texas Department of State Health Services Vital Statistics Seminar held two weeks ago in Austin, the City of Mission Vital Statistics Division received the five-star 2017 exemplary award. I'm very proud of our staff, Ms. Millie Hernandez, our Assistant City Secretary, Paula Bondar, Administrative Assistant, Mary Cantú, our Vital Statistics Deputy, and Lisa Loyah, our Deputy. They work very hard. There's very strict criteria in order to receive this award. There was only four cities from Hidalgo County that received the exemplary award, and the City of Mission was one of them. We have been receiving this award since 2003, and we've been exemplary status already for the last two years. So I'm very proud of the staff for receiving this award, and we hope to receive it again next year.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Everybody look over here, and then three, two, one. I'm going to move. Perfect, we got it.
There you go. Go first for the wall.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, the next item are the departmental reports that are in your packet. Does anybody have any questions or changes?
If there are no questions, I would like to put in a formal motion to accept the departmental report as presented in writing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is citizens' participation. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda? Ana, did anyone sign up? No? Okay. Then we'll go on to the public hearing. Mr. Acevedo?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for discussion and action amending ordinance 4576, which amends various portions of Chapter 86, signs of the Mission Code of Ordinances. And if the council is inclined to approve this amendment, the adoption of an ordinance is required. On November 27, 2017, the City Council considered recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved said recommendations, subject to two modifications. However, due to public concern regarding the modifications, staff is requesting reconsideration of those amendments. Staff is recommending that ordinance 4576 be amended as follows. Adding a provision for temporary signs at any time not to exceed four square feet. Allowing for temporary signs on trailers with restrictions of sign not to exceed the length of the trailer and solely on the expressway corridor in commercially zoned districts. And removing a reference of the size of a temporary sign during an election period, which we're now limiting, limiting the size to 40 square feet. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item, item 1.1A is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of the item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to their proposed ordinance? If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to amend ordinance number 4576 and adopt ordinance number 4581. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the disposition of the minutes, City Council Meeting of November 27, 2017, City Council Workshop, November 29, 2017, and December 5, 2017.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is the acknowledgement of minutes from the Mission Education Development Council on July the 18th of 2017, Special Mission Economic Development Corporation, August the 22nd of 2017, and October the 17th of 2017. Mission Redevelopment Authority, September the 26th and October 10th of 2017. Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, September the 26th, 2017, and October 10, 2017.
I'm moved to approve the acknowledged receipt of minutes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to acknowledge the receipt of the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. We're going to move on to item 4.1. Mr. Acevedo?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. Item 4.1 is for approval of the City of Mission Design Manual for the Installation of Network Nodes and Node Support Poles pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 284. On September 1, 2017, Senate Bill 1004 became law in the state of Texas, giving telecommunications companies access to public right of ways in Texas municipalities for small cells or network nodes. And the compensation due to cities for the use of the right of ways for this equipment, the design manual will govern the installation and construction of network nodes and new node support poles in public right of ways. That includes additional installation and construction details that do not conflict with Texas Local Government Code 284. Mayor Protem and Council, what this is, is it's going to give, the manual's going to outline the size and the height restrictions, as well as the areas in which telecommunications providers cannot pull or cannot put their network nodes. For example, they can't put them in residential areas, in public parks, or in historical districts. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. Item 4.1 is now before you.
Are there any questions? There's a motion? Any questions?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.2?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. Item 4.2 is for the adoption of an ordinance to amend ordinance 3797, adjusting and establishing fees for the installation of network nodes and node support poles pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 284. On September 1, 2017, Senate Bill 1004 became law, giving the telecommunications companies a right to install their equipment on public right of ways. And staff is recommending that the permit fees for these installations be approved as follows. $500 per application for up to five nodes, and $250 for each additional node. The nodes are small little boxes that are going to be placed on top of the utility poles. If the telecommunications provider is requesting a pole by itself, the fee will be $1,000 per pole application. And the city will also be assessing a $250 annual fee for each application. Staff is recommending approval of the amendment of our fee schedules, as is our city manager. Item 4.2 is now before you.
Are there any questions, staff?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept ordinance 4582. And that would be amending ordinance number 3797, adjusting and establishing fees for the installation of network nodes and node support poles. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item?
Yes, Mayor Protem, Council. This is authorization for mayor to submit the Rio Grande Valley Walk of Fame nominee. This request is from the City of Hidalgo, and these, this nominee is introduced in the ceremony at the Border Fest festivities. So staff and city manager are recommending approval for mayor to submit a nominee.
Is there a question or a motion?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to submit the Rio Grande Valley Walk of Fame nominees. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item? Chief?
Mayor Protem and Council, I'm here before you. Present item 4.4, authorizing to submit application for the 2007 grant fund through the Walmart Corporation. The Mission Fire Department is seeking approval for submitting an application for a $1,000 grant, and also an authorization for the mayor to sign an affirmation letter. Staff and city manager recommend approval. This matters before you.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the submittal of the application for the 2017 grant funds through Walmart Corporation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Item 4.5 is authorization to solicit bids for the purchase of a security system for the library. The estimated cost is $20,000. Our current system is out of date and has low resolution, resolution, and is unable to fully help when incidents occur. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Is there any questions?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the solicitation of bids for the purchase of a security system for the library. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item? Mr. Bermades?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, City Council. I'm here before you. Item 4.6, authorization purchase of interlocking dance floor stage and cards for City Mission Event Center from Millhart Music Center. Via buy board contract number 539-17. Estimated cost is $36,076. This will be purchased for the City Mission Event Center. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay. Are there any questions or a motion to be offered?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of equipment and for the Mission Event Center. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item?
Good afternoon. Item 4.7 is the approval to adopt the rental rates for the Mission Event Center. These rates have been studied. We have discussed them in a workshop with the council. We've put a lot of work into it. We made special provisions for mission residents, and we have a rate to include for the resident, a non-resident, a nonprofit, a corporate, and a promoter to be able to use the Mission Event Center. We're proud to say that we're still on schedule, and we should be opening in March of 2018. So it's important that we have these rates approved by the city council tonight. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I so move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the rental rates for the Mission Event Center as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck. Next item? Chief?
Mayor Protem, City Council. Item 4.8 is authorization to purchase an Eaton frame and full battery replacements for the Mission Police Department UPS system via DIR Contract PSO 2669. The UPS system is designed to maintain constant electrical power to all critical infrastructure when there is any form of power interruption. The current Eaton frame was purchased in 2000, and the batteries on the UPS are five years old and are in need of replacement. The total cost for this project is $72,815.5. Staff and city manager recommend approval to purchase these items.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of the Eaton frame and full battery replacements for Mission PD. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, chief?
Item 4.9 is the authorization to purchase a microwave system via state-approved contract for the South Police Station under Buy Board Contract 523-17. The microwave system is designed to transmit signals from our main police station to the South Police Station for the operation of our telephone lines, our internet service, and our computers. The current unit is over six years old and is constantly in need of repair, thus causing a loss of signals and interfering with our daily operations. The cost of the new microwave system is $12,632. Staff and city manager recommend approval for the purchase of these items.
Any questions or a motion?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion to authorize the purchase of a microwave system via state-approved contract for the South Police Station, Buy Board Contract Number 523-17. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Item 4.10 is approval of work authorization number one for ROW Surveying Services LLC through Professional Services for a Meets and Bound survey. The Meets and Bound survey is to establish new boundary lines to then amend our current lease agreement between the City Mission and the Mission Skeet and Trap Club, Inc. Upon amending the lease, the Mission Skeet and Trap Club, Inc., will release certain acres of land currently on the lease for the purpose of the City Mission, expanding city facilities and services in the aforementioned acreage. The total expenditure for these services is $12,538. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the work authorization number one with ROW Surveying Services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, chief?
Item 411 is authorization to enter into a contract between the City Mission and Mary Ann Pedales, a sole-source vendor to serve as a technical supervisor for alcohol breath test program services. Miss Mary Ann Pedales, DBA, is a sole-source vendor for breath test services in Hidalgo, Willistee, Cameron, and Starr Counties. Miss Pedales will assure the proper operation of the Intoxilizer 9,000 for the use by Mission Police officers who are tasked with testing persons arrested for the offense of driving while intoxicated. The contract amount is $11,000. Staff and the city manager recommend approval on this item.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize to end. There's a motion and a second to authorize to enter into a contract between the City of Mission and Mary Ann Pedales, a sole-source vendor to serve as technical supervisor for the alcohol breath test program services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next item is the tax collections report.
Good afternoon. Item four twelve is the tax collections report for the month of November twenty-seventeen. Total adjusted tax levy was twenty million fifty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-six cents, and the amount of collections as of the end of November was one million three hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and seven dollars and thirty-three cents, which represents six point eighty-seven percent of the tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions or a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the tax collection report for November as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Item four point thirteen is approval of the October twenty-seventeen financial statements. The beginning fund balance was thirty-six million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand and ninety-three dollars. Total revenues for the month were four million nine hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and eight dollars, and total expenditures were six million six hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars, which leaves an ending fund balance of thirty-four million four hundred and ninety-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Any questions or a motion?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the October twenty-seventeen financial statements as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item.
Mayor and Council, the item number four point fourteen is the approval of rental rates for the City of Mission Parks and Recreation Facilities. I believe before you is the actual application that we'll be using. These rates were discussed during the most recent city, city council workshop. These rates have also been in the practice for the last couple of years. We looked at this very carefully as to what our fees were, our fee structure, and so this has been in place for a couple of years. We made some modifications through the, through the workshop that you'll notice are highlighted in your packet. We've set a residential rate, a non-residential rate, a nonprofit rate, and a commercial corporate rate. And this was to address some of the new trends that are happening as far as, you know, living healthy and recreation in our, the use of our parks and our facilities. And it is important that our city council will approve the rental agreement rates for our parks and our facilities tonight. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rental rates for the City of Mission of, for the Parks and Recreation Facilities. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, City Council. Happy for you, item number four point one five, which is the authorization to solicit bids for right-of-way mowing and maintenance services. This work is to include mowing, bed maintenance, tree trimming, and branch removal below eight foot, and litter debris removal on city rights ways. Services to include all supervision, labor, materials, supplies, and tools, and necessary equipment for the cleaning, clearing, and trimming. The loading and disposal of all trash, debris, rubbish, organic debris, municipal and solid waste, special waste, and tires. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Are there any questions or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize to solicit bids for right-of-way mowing and maintenance services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item.
I have before you item four point one six, which is the authorization toward contract via state-approved Buy Board Contract number five five two dash one seven for air conditioner service of the filters for city facilities and buildings. This is for a one-year contract with two one-year renewal options at a zero percent price increase, and an annual cost of thirteen thousand eighty dollars. City's been doing business now for over fourteen years with Joe Fly, Inc. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions or a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the contract via state-approved Buy Board for air conditioner filters service for the city, city facilities and buildings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, City Council members. Come before you, seeking authorization to purchase equipment via state-approved contract for the Public Works Department and the Health Department. We're seeking to purchase Chevrolet fifteen-hundred truck at a cost of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and two dollars for the Public Works Department, and Ford F-one-fifty truck at a cost of twenty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars for the Health Department. Staff recommendation is authorization to purchase via state-approved Buy Board Contract five twenty-one dash sixteen.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Again, were any price comparisons done to, with our local vendors?
Yes, usually this Buy Board contracts, the cost for these trucks are lower than the trucks that we have at the market here in the, in the river valley.
For this purchase, were there comparative bids requested from?
No. No, this was a straight purchase through via, through Buy Board.
You don't know if they're cheaper or not?
No, I know, because I have research on those, on the trucks here in the, in the, in the valley, because you had asked for those probably a few meetings back. Yeah. But the comparison is no, the comparison is that through Buy Board, the trucks are, are cheaper than, than purchasing here.
I just want to, for the record, let, let you know that our vendors do ask us.
Yes.
Do, do ask us, you know, that, that they are maybe competitive or even lower than the Buy Board in many cases. I just want to make sure that, that we can, you know, have something like a phone call or something that, that those things were, were made, you know?
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure of the purchasing department, but there's no Buy Board contract.
No, there's no local dealership that's part of the Buy Board contract.
I, I understand how the Buy Board works.
We do encourage them to participate and to communicate with us, so we can assist them in going through the process and getting registered to the Buy Board and competing through the Buy Board for state cooperative contracts for vehicles. In this case, since we, we are trying to keep it consistent with our vehicles and our fleet because of parts, maintenance, et cetera, we try to purchase the same brand, same style of vehicle across the board to, for cost-saving purposes, and taking advantage of the economies of scale since it's through the state, and the entire state, city, educational institutions acquire vehicles through the co-op.
But the trucks look the same over there at, at the parking lot when they're selling them, you know, that, you know, the Chevrolet's a Chevrolet, a fifteen-hundred's fifteen-hundred, you know, so. My, my concern, my concern, because I get, I get the, the questions, that, that we go straight to Buy Board and we don't even consider anything else, you know, and, and for us to answer the question, competitive bidding, bidding process, you know, at least a phone call to our local Chevrolet agency, whichever, doesn't matter, you know, but, but, I mean, we, you know, there are, you know, just to look at the comparison and maybe, the report may come back that they are five thousand, six thousand dollars more expensive than the other, but at least we have a defense that we looked at.
We, we can definitely start looking into that, Mr. O'Kanya, Dr. O'Kanya, and we would entertain writing specs for the vehicle, so we can actually put it out for bids. Since they're not under a co-op, we, we are required and mandated by Texas Local Government Code to procure through the bidding process, and we're not going to go through the co-op.
Right.
That's, that's great, but, but I just want to, I just want to make sure to at least that you, that you look at the.
Yes, sir. We'll look into that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion or any other questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of the Chevrolet fifteen-hundred truck and a Ford F-one-fifty truck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, Mayor Protem, City Council members. Item four point eighteen is the approval to purchase ultraviolet parts for the wastewater treatment plant from a sole-source vendor. Staff is recommending to purchase parts for, for ultraviolet disinfection system from Asylum Water Solutions, Waterco products, a sole-source vendor. The ultraviolet system parts will be replacing the non-working UV parts for the final disinfection process of the wastewater treatment plant. This was installed back in two thousand and six and purchased from the same vendor. We have attached a sole-source letter from the vendor, Asylum Water Solutions USA, and Waterco products, and the descriptions of the parts needed. Again, staff recommendation is authorization to purchase a UV system part from Asylum Water Solutions USA, Waterco products, a sole-source vendor.
Okay. Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the purchase of ultraviolet parts for the wastewater treatment plant from a sole-source vendor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, Mayor Protem, City Council members. Item four point nineteen is the authorization to solicit bids for the purchase of cold water meters for the Public Works Department. This, this bid will, or this items will be needed to replace, meters will be needed to replace non-functioning meters and for new developments throughout the City of Mission. The contract terms will be for one year with one-year renewal, renewal options. The yearly estimated cost is of sixty thousand dollars. Again, staff recommendation is to solicit for bids for cold water meters.
Okay. Any questions or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize to solicit for bids for the purchase of cold water meters for the Public Works Department. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, Mayor Protem, City Council members. Item four point twenty is the authorization to award bid for electrical repair and maintenance services for water treatment plants, wastewater treatment plant, and water distribution division. The City of Mission has accepted an open for bid responses for electrical services. Staff recommends awarding bid to Science Brothers Construction LLC, who is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. Bid tabulation is attached. The master electrician hourly rate will be at thirty-four dollars per hour, and assistant electrician will be at fifteen dollars per hour. The performance of electrical repair and maintenance will be on a as-needed basis for a one-year, for, throughout the one year, and of course, we have two one-year renewal options for this bid. Staff recommendation is authorization to award bid to Science Brothers Construction LLC.
Okay. Questions?
I have a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize a bid for electrical repair and maintenance service for water treatment, treatments, water treatment plant and water distribution division to Science Brothers Construction LLC, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, Mayor Protem, City Council members. Item four point twenty-one is the approval of work authorization number eleven with Javier Inojosa Engineering, related to the Mission Overlay Improvement Project. Work Authorization Number eleven entails plan specifications and estimate for street improvement project at Quica de la Garza Loop. Improvements of the project includes asphalt pavement overlay, utility adjustment, and replacement of damage, concrete, concrete cover and gutter, and also rehabilitation of an area at Quica, Quica Loop. Staff recommendation is approval of work authorization number eleven with Javier Inojosa Engineering for this project.
Are there any questions or a motion?
I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve work authorization number eleven with Javier Inojosa Engineering. All in, in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, Mayor Protem, City Council members. Item four point twenty-two is the authorization to solicit bids for rehabilitation project at four sanitary sewer lift stations. Lift station rehabilitation project entails a replacement of pump bases, discharge, and suction pipes, fittings, valves, check valves, and pump rating guides. The approximate cost for this construction will be of two hundred thousand dollars. The lift station locations are at Los Indios and Santa Fe, Morefield and Four Mile Line, Inspiration and Acilia Street, Cherry Road, and one and three-quarters North Mile. Staff recommendation is authorization to solicit for bids for this project.
Okay. Questions or a motion?
Move to approve.
Move for approval. Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize to solicit for bids for rehabilitation projects for four sanitary sewer lift stations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And if there's no other, there's no unfinished business. Mr. Rosso, do you have any comments?
Yes, ma'am. The next meeting we have is January the eighth, so I just wanted to wish the council and, and the citizens of Mission, on behalf of our staff, our directors, and myself, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We also do have a real nice program that we have every year. This is our Cops for Kids toy giveaway that the City of Mission participates with the Mission Police Department and Mission Crime Stoppers. And so we're very pleased to, to be a part of that. This is going to take place this Friday at one o'clock. And so we have a lot of families participating, and if you all have a chance, it's a great opportunity to see the kids with a big smile. Come out and join us at one o'clock on Friday.
And more second.
And this is at the Mission Police Department right in front, by the foyer, yes.
Okay.
And that's all I have, ma'am.
All right.
Mayor Protem, just coming.
I don't have any comments. Just to wish everybody a Happy New Year, on.
On behalf of us.
On behalf of the mayor and the rest of us. And we really appreciate your service throughout the year. It's been a great year. I think that the city has done very well, and, and because of you guys, and staff, and, and I'm just honored to be a part of the City of Mission. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favors, omit, oh, what? All opposed say no. Right, yeah, okay. Motion carries. The meeting's adjourned.